Yes.
All right, I want to call the committee workshop of Ganksburg Borough Council of May 4th to order. This is the committee workshop of standing committees of Borough Council. First item of business is to approve the committee minutes from the April 6, 2021 meeting. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin, who is muted?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries and the minutes are approved. All right, the first item of business tonight before we get into the individual committees is discussion on the comprehensive review for committee assignment. Roger has gone over this, shared this with me, and we've looked over the feasibility of dividing this rather large document out into the committees based upon the topics within that document. Now, that being said, before we go into that, does anyone have any discussion or any opinions on the process before we move on?
I have a question. Are we planning on meeting as a group to discuss things before we divide out and go out into our committees to then reconvene at some point to discuss? Because I wonder if it would be good for continuity for us all to discuss things as a group and then split off in separate committees to tackle projects? Maybe workshop for the comprehensive plan?
I'll share my thoughts if the rest have thoughts after you're done. Anyone else have thoughts in that regard?
I think it would be, I think it'd be good to be able to get a direction and then kind of move that direction. So I would agree with that.
Okay, anyone else? Not hearing anything. So my thought was that we would use the first part of committee workshop for general discussion of all the topics. But tonight, what I'd like to do is break it out so that each person that's on a particular committee will have time to focus mainly on that so that when we're back as a body, they can share their input with all of us. And we will add, like we did tonight, a standing committee of council for review of the comprehensive plan. So it's kind of what you suggest, Sarah. But I'd like everybody, rather than everybody trying to digest the entire document in one sitting, it might be easier for each committee person to, it's up to you guys. I'm not here to dictate how we're going to do this. But that was the discussion we had at the last meeting was that we would do that.
I just wonder if it would be, because I have not been through a comprehensive plan before in this capacity, that I wonder if having just, and I know adding another meeting, but coming together as one group and having a direction and then like going, okay, go team, here's your division, so that we go off, maybe not in like 3,000 different directions. I don't know. Like for me, it's comforting to have a little bit more structure. But if the group doesn't feel that way, I can adjust to.
Gary, if I may, the last time the comprehensive plan was done, and I think Rod is probably the only one on council that was through it before. Glenda, of course, but, and I was on the planning commission. This was kind of, the whole comprehensive plan was driven by the planning commission. We had a couple of certified urban planners on the planning commission. So they kind of spoke the same language, but the consultants and council at that time was comfortable with the planning commission kind of taking the lead on it. And they worked on it, they gathered data and everything else. In this case, since we have a comprehensive plan and we're looking at updating what we have now, and we have a different committee structure, I thought, and what I did is I went through and I kind of where each of these things fit with each committee and stuff like that. And thought maybe, you know, we could do a discussion here as a whole and then have the committees take and go with it there. There is going to be a lot of coordination back and forth between those. And I kind of left that to the admin staff and to this section of the first monthly meetings. And then, of course, when you get to the back part of this document, the Finance Ordinance Administration takes a lead role, looking at the zoning and all of that stuff. So what we've done here, and I've also included places like the DMP and POC and all those different groups that are going to be contributing to this. And it always seemed a little easier when it was just, you know, a few of us from the planning commission with the consultant and working through some things and getting those ideas out and then taking it back to the planning commission and having them basically ratify it and then send it on to council. So kind of what I did, I did discuss some of this with Gary. This I kind of ran through on Saturday, Sunday afternoon and Saturday night, Sunday afternoon. And I didn't get it to Gary until late yesterday. So, but the first couple of things on the review, on the audit at the beginning, on page two, you know, there's some things in there for the Public Works and Safety Committee. There's some things in there for the Community Economic Development. There's also the authority. I did put the authority in here as a stakeholder in all of this. So, and I kind of looked at the committees as a stakeholder so that, you know, they have certain things that they want to do and want to go with and try to, you know, implement their goals and objectives into this. I think it's going to go a long way towards getting us to the final product that we're looking for. The entire council, of course, will have to be the one that ratifies the thing at the end of the day. And of course, it's going to get reviewed by county. It's going to get reviewed by our surrounding municipalities to make sure that everything is in in coordination with what they're looking at, particularly the county one. I know the county has a lot of, did a lot of work on theirs. Silver Spring just finished their comprehensive plan. So, and I had a meeting today actually with the school district and Scott Fraser, Mark Leidy and Greg Longwell, and they are, they did a lot of work on their comprehensive plan. They've opened up their consultant to us to use for information. So we're, we've got a ton of information to come in. It's just going to take a lot of digestion. And I think instead of, you know, to keep the committees kind of at the forefront of the whole thing until it's ready to go to the entire council, that was, that was just my thoughts. If we had, I'm going to say the planners on the PC that we used to have, it would be entirely up to council if they wanted to send it over to the PC and let them take the lead on it like the last time. But I think the committees setting their goals is going to make it a little more in your ballpark instead of in theirs this time. I hope that made sense.
I guess I'm a little nervous about just making sure that we're moving forward. So as long as there's instruction and we come back, you know, whatever you guys feel is best. I just thought maybe as that, what we've received is a lot of information to process. So I know, like, I love dividing it out, giving tasks and having committees come back. I just thought maybe it would be helpful to have something upfront where we just had more than a couple of minutes to digest it all as a group and then go out and get it done. That was my thinking, my headspace. But if, again, like I'll be flexible with it. I just, this is new to me and I want to make sure that I'm doing everything I need to be doing and moving my committees forward with knowing what the oval, the process of the comprehensive plan. Because I've sat in a meeting and I think times it goes a little over my head. And I don't know about other council members, if they feel that way too, like what our role is in digesting and making recommendations. Like maybe I, like a workshop just on the comp plan, I guess is kind of, maybe I just need to Google it and get more information that way.
I think we're talking about the same thing, but we're not saying it the same way. The idea here is, this is a lot of information, you're correct. And if we, if we are able to have this disseminated so that you don't have to review the entire document yet, we take the segments that have to do with each of the committees that we already have assigned and let those committees digest that. And then, once that's all done, when we have our meeting, then we do an overview of the whole thing and each committee gives a report and then you are informed. I don't like the idea of every councilperson taking every bullet point or numbered point on this and analyzing it at this point. I think it would be simplified if each of those points were discussed within committee. And the way the committee structure is right now, it could be done at our meeting, so you would hear it anyway. I'm just trying to say.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that process. Yeah, I get that. I just, maybe I'm a little nervous about starting it without knowing more, but that's okay.
Can I interject here? I think the, I think the important thing is if we're going to ask committees to look at something that the objective is clear to the committee, what are they looking at? What are, what are we looking, what type of recommendation are we looking for them to give? That has to be clear. And I just hope we're not getting too granular into the committees on something that we all have to spend time on anyway. So that would be my concern. And, you know, there are a lot in here. I don't know, I haven't seen the breakdown and what you were able to do. But I'd be more in favor of a council as a whole kind of attacking this first. And then if there are question areas that council has that they need a recommendation from a committee, that we identify those and then we send that to the committee for further review.
All right, so.
I think we're just duplicating work.
So what I'm hearing is you're proposing that we take each item number by number and go through the whole document as a group. And I'm fine with that, if that's what the group wants to do.
I don't, I don't agree with that. I think if the committees are assigned a certain area they have to go over and they come back to the entire council, we can discuss each committee's recommendation. I think that's what you're saying, aren't you, Gary?
Well, yeah, that's, but I hear what Kyle's saying too. I understand Kyle, what you're saying and where you're coming from with this. It does seem to me that it, you know, I like the word granular. That kind of fits pretty nicely. You know, I'm open to whatever the rest of council wishes to do.
A lot of these are recommendations from EPD to us.
That is correct.
So I just hope, yeah, again, I just hope we're not getting too granular in that, you know, we can do a council level review. If there are areas where we need extra focus, then that would be where the committee would step in and council would identify and say, look, we're having too much discussion on this, perhaps it needs to go to the committee. And that's where the extra.
All right.
Discussion can take place. But then again, you know, I'm just looking at this and I haven't seen, you know, your breakdown. But from what I see, it's just, there's a lot here that is sort of council-wide discussion, you know. It's, there's maybe a couple items that could go to highway public safety, maybe a couple that could go to recreation. But, you know, there's always going to be, there's going to be one committee with a large number of these to review, it seems like that, in my opinion. And I just think, let's not duplicate work. Let's just all sit down together and hammer it out. And then if.
So, so how do you propose we do that during the committee workshop session? We just have a committee of the whole and, and open the discussion? Go point by point?
We could if you wanted to do that at the, at the June 1st meeting. Or we could have, we could have a separate council-wide meeting to do, a special meeting just on, just specifically on this comprehensive plan, you know. And that way, we're not having staff do a Community Economic Development Committee, a property and parks and recreation, and then, you know, Miss Moot Community Outreach. Then we're kind of just consolidating all the effort in one. And then if we need to, we'll send it out afterwards to branch it out.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Has the consultant weighed in on a recommendations in terms of the process that they're recommending for the borough to tackle this undertaking?
They have, what they have here is the initial audit of where we stand right now with our current comprehensive plan. And it makes some recommendations in here as to, particularly in the zoning ordinance, some changes that we want to look at updating. This is, this is where we stand right now with what we have in place. What is still usable, what is not usable out of the old, the old comprehensive plan and any kind of new information, like the wireless cellular towers that are in here. They've made mention of that in this, in this document. Instead of us trying to guess as to what we can use, this addresses some of the newer technology. And a couple of years ago, that was a big thing in the countywide. I hear exactly what Councilman Miller is saying and I hear exactly what Councilman Egerton is saying. And I think I would like, if with your blessing, I would like to send about my thoughts to everybody so they have an idea of where I was looking at the committees doing this. I was, I was looking at the committees doing maybe some of the homework, the background work, and then bringing it to council as a committee of the whole, so to speak. And then we can get back to, and then, you know, they would, they would make a motion yes or no on the changes that the committees did. The, I was giving the committees a little more carte blanche than, than, than having everybody sit down all together.
Let's just, Roger, I guess my question was more procedural in nature, in nature in terms of the consultant making any recommendations in terms of the process moving forward. And I, and what I'm getting at also is a question of why, why not include the planning commission in this review? And I say that only because one of the, one of the benefits of having a standing planning commission is that those folks are tasked with really digging down deep into land use and subdivision land development issues within the borough. And at least in theory, they have a, a working understanding of what has worked, what hasn't worked. And they might be able to at least add a, add input into this process moving forward. And I don't want to throw a wrench into your discussions or what you've, what you've structured up to this point, but I just throw that out there.
I agree with Solicitor Cassidy's comments, perhaps even prior to the Borough Council sitting down to review this as a whole, that we send it to the planning commission for their review. And they, they give us a, you know, a step-by-step, just sort of comments on what the audit is and their, their, their view of it. And then we can go from there. And that, that way, council has the information and the planning commission has given us, has given us the input.
Can we just take a specific example here to see how this could get somewhat convoluted? If I may, have you all seen it? Have you all looked at it?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. You'll notice that, let's look at like page two, if you have it in front of you. If you don't, it's okay. But there are some of the points that are highlighted in green. According to the document they send, select actions are highlighted as potential focus areas relevant for the borough's future planning efforts. So my question is, let's just take one, for example. Implement feasible traffic calming techniques to lower traffic speeds and improve pedestrian and bicycle. Now, if I'm on a committee that's assigned to, let's say we assign that to the Public Works Committee, what am I supposed to do with that statement? Am I supposed to give a specific way of doing that? Or am I just supposed to say, yeah, we'll implement feasible traffic calming techniques when we get around to it? I mean.
That's where I was heading with this can get very granular when that's not the point. This is a comprehensive plan. It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be a direction, you know, a vision for what we want to see, not necessarily, you know, line by line approval or how, you know.
So I think that's where the confusion is with you, Sarah, is are we supposed to give the how? Or are we just supposed to look at this as being a direction for the future?
Yes, and my, and my concern is, is that when we spoke way back, like I think about two months ago, is that the process of how I thought we were going to go into the comprehensive plan wasn't quite followed because I thought we were going to invite the stakeholders. And maybe that is what you're talking about, Gary, is inviting the stakeholders by having committee meetings. But I think that if we don't have a clear direction and instruction, we can take things to committee and if our committees are going off in a different direction, it does us no good. That's why I like the structure of getting together, kind of coming up with a map on how we want to map out our comprehensive plan and going forward. But I do think Solicitor's comments are, you know, let's, let's talk to them and see what their recommendations are. Because I want to get this going because I know it's going to take a long time to come to fruition. And I don't want it to be held up anymore. But I think that I don't want to waste my committee members' times going off in the wrong direction.
Yep. I just want to reiterate just quickly that the stakeholder meetings are still important and we still need to find a way to, to work that into this process. And I thought that we had that figured out, I'll have to go back and review the minutes from when EPD came to our Community Economic Development Committee meeting and what she told us at that time. But the stakeholder meetings are absolutely essential to this process and we still need to incorporate them.
Yeah, and we did that the last time too, when we did this. And the stakeholder meetings will come, this, this document here is basically where we stand right now as far as our current comprehensive plan. To use an example, on page two, number 12, it says, evaluate a plan for potential local and regional opportunities resulting from a long-term development of quarter one. We know that's not an option anymore. So this is, what is, what is here is basically our, our grade, our report card. It was at the end of the current comprehensive plan. And where do we stand on this? I don't think they're actually looking for specific pedestrian and bicycle routes in the borough and they're not expecting the committee come up with those. It's something that we need to incorporate into the, into the comprehensive plan, that this is a direction we want to go. And then as those opportunities arise, perfect example is the sunup plan where Councilman Miller said about the connectivity to the sidewalks. It made absolute sense, all right, in a certain, in his context and within, with the plan. And that's something that the Public Works and Safety or the Community Outreach or somebody along those lines, even Parks and Rec to that, for that matter, can start looking at, we want to look at a plan for connectivity. And when the opportunity presents itself, we make sure that we put that in there. Then we get another check mark in our, our report card here. But I will, I will reach out to Carolyn again. I think the stakeholder meetings were after this document, after council has been through this document and kind of picked a direction. Do, are these priorities that you want to address? Are these not a priorities you want to address? If I'm remembering that meeting right, I think she mentioned that this was, this was prior to the stakeholders. Once we have a, a, a overall document that we're ready to present at a stakeholder meeting, and then they break it down into different charrettes during that stakeholder meeting to come up with a better direction. And I think that's where we're at right now. So I don't think it's a, it's, it's time for the stakeholders yet. I think it's time for council and them, and potentially the planning commission, yes, especially on the zoning side of it, to give us that overall overarching document that we can take out. And then we start pulling pieces in together and putting, taking pieces completely out to figure out where we want to go forward. And then we present that to the, at the town hall meeting, at the charrette, and get the stakeholders involved and make sure that we're going in the right direction that they want us to go on.
Roger, I agree with all of that, I think. I do say that council should look at the 46 items that are blocked out and identify whether or not they agree with this analysis, that the green blocks are the things that we want to focus on. And if they are, each individual councilperson should take a look at those, identify what their priorities are, and then maybe prioritize them so that they're ready for the next meeting that you're going to bring this person back to so that we can have a more intelligent conversation. We can do within our group what we do outside when we go to the larger group and ask people to prioritize what their thoughts are, what the community thinks about that. We should be ready for that conversation based on the priority, the list of things that we have to look at.
Okay. So our homework assignment then is, if you will, to review the highlighted areas. Yes?
Review the entire thing. Why do we want to discard the white sections?
Well, based on what they said, these are the potential focus areas relevant to the borough. The other ones are already there. We, I certainly wouldn't suggest you skip them, but the main emphasis should be on the green ones, I think. That's just me.
Yeah, I'm just saying, review all 46, see if you agree with the green ones. If you do, whatever you, whatever you want, prioritize them and then come back ready to talk about it.
All right, so we'll come back ready to talk about that at the June, the first meeting in June. How's that?
Right, and let us know if there's a priority that you have that's not on that list that we can add to that. That is also part of this process.
That's a very good point.
Right.
So June 1, we're going to spend the entire meeting on understanding how each of us prioritize this list.
I would suggest that we move the committee workshop meeting to 6:30 that night. Would that be all right? It gives us, that gives us a good hour to get started.
Yes.
Rather than a half hour and limiting our time, I think an hour is going to be enough, but it might.
I think we've already spent about a half an hour on the discussion of the meeting for the meeting. So probably allow ourselves.
I'd be all right moving it to six o'clock. I mean, that's whatever we need to do to get through that part of it, I think would be important. But that's up to you.
That's up to everybody. Do I hear a census for six o'clock or 6:30?
I would, I'd do six o'clock. I think we're going to talk.
Six o'clock, John, you want six o'clock? Joe?
That's fine with me.
Kyle?
That's good for me too.
Okay, Scott?
Yeah, that's fine.
There he is, Scott is. Okay, Rodney?
Yep.
Good, six o'clock it is.
On June 1st.
June 1st.
President, to avoid the cost of having to re-advertise the committee meeting, you should simply, I suggest recess tonight's meeting with the announcement that was just made that this committee will reconvene at June 1st, six o'clock for continuation of this discussion.
Okay.
Mike, can we get through the rest of the agenda items for the committee discussion and then recess the meeting?
Oh, yeah, that's totally fine.
Okay.
All right.
Yep.
So Mike, when we get there, remind me because I'll forget.
Will do.
All right, thank you. Sorry, my pen just dried up. Okay, we'll move on then to Municipal and Community Outreach. Mrs. Egerton?
We did not meet, but you will see that there is something on the agenda for Guardian offers for our media services so that we can get our website and platform updated. And I did send out a, a meeting in brief to set up another one to come back and discuss some other items for our outreach committee. So thank you. And the minutes from the last meeting are available. I think we talked about them at our last committee workshop.
Would that management contract of our like social media and stuff be on top of the, the part-time position to manage social media? Or would that be doing the job of that half, half-time office worker?
That position is not a position, that is just a person that would be identified within the borough office. Am I correct, Roger? It would not be an additional employee, would be one to either replace or to fill an absent person currently.
Well, I think what, in the discussion with Glenda and I, yes, this would, this would actually be. Well, I think what, in, in the discussion with Glenda and I, yes, this would, this would actually be in place of that person in there with the amount of money that we'd be paying Guardian. It's much cheaper than it is to have a, even a part-time employee in the borough office doing this. And these, these.
But we would still need a person to be the point person to get the content to this person.
Not necessarily, that would be Glenda and myself and, and, uh, probably police chief, uh, potentially the fire chief, um, council president, whoever, you know, I mean, the, the stuff would still funnel through the admin staff in the office, but then we would get it out to the, to Guardian to take care of. Um, they would also take care of posting meeting, meetings and stuff and all that, you know. Um, once we have the recordings done, we would send them over to them and have them take care of it. Um, we could sooner, and, and this would make it a little easier because when we get a part-time person in the office, they end up doing maybe not exactly what it is that we brought them in to do. Um, and, and just the nature of, of the way the office works, you know, the phones ring, someone picks it up to make sure that the residents' needs are taken care of. So, um, in discussions with Glenda and I, or between Glenda and myself, we kind of figured if, if council decides to go with this Guardian to completely revamp everything and, you know, maybe pull the authority into the, all that also, it's going to be a lot more financially beneficial to hire Guardian to do it and have them manage everything instead of trying to get one person in the office. Because you're going to have sick time, you're going to have stuff like that. These people have multiple people that can put stuff out for us. I think what we would request is before council takes action on this contract, is that we develop a, not necessarily a point by point, but how, what, what are specifics that you want to see put out on the website? What are specifics you want to go out to Facebook, um, you know, and stuff like that? So it is going to have to come back to the, to this committee, um, the, the, the Public Outreach Committee to try to get something ironed out, not necessarily a total social media policy, but a social media plan as to what we want to put out there. And that will make it a whole lot easier on our part, a whole lot easier on your part and a whole lot easier on, on the part of Guardian if they're the ones that you choose.
And, and Roger, is this the only, um, proposal we have to look at? I know this came highly recommended.
At this point in time, yes, that is the only one we have. I did have, um, had contact with another, um, young lady that's actually, um, she's a, Mallory is her last name. I, she came recommended from Mike Miller, actually from Hummels Town. They just brought her on, onboard in Hummels Town. Um, and this is all she does. Um, prices were not as comparable as what they were with Guardian, but, um, she, she didn't really give me any specifics on it. And I had, to be honest with you, I have, I was, I was off yesterday. I did not get a chance to reach back out to her.
Okay, and then my next question is, is I saw, I know that this is on the agenda tonight. Is this somewhat like the money that we'll be able to use through the, the rescue plan? Will, will you be able to offset it through that?
I'm going to try.
Okay.
And that's, and that, that ties into the other agreement that's on the agenda tonight too.
Sorry.
So.
Yeah, and, and I think at our next meeting, our next committee meeting, our goals will be to outline what, what things we want to see and how often, and you know, we'll get into the nitty gritty of that for you.
Okay.
I'm just looking at this proposal right now from Guardian. And I'm not seeing that they actually post to you, to social media for you. What, what, what particular service, you know, is that additional to this? Or is that included with the, the amount of $350 a month?
I'm going to turn this over to Glenda. She actually spoke to them, um, and, and, uh, she can probably answer that question a lot better than I can.
Yes, they included all the social media outlets that we were wanting to use in that price that they gave us. And in addition, they would redevelop the website as part of that package. So we would get a new website. We would get, uh, the service of having it updated as we needed and also linked to social media so that we could get things out in a more timely manner. It would be integrated according to what he told me, where things that we posted and we wanted to put out to social media, they could do that electronically for us. It sounded like it would be much simpler than having somebody in the office who would be doing this as part of a job. It sounds like they could do everything we need for the price that they quoted us.
Well, I'm just looking at the price they quoted us and it doesn't, it says, SEO and social media analytics included social media coaching. Uh, from what I, it kind of, I kind of gather that they're going to build us a website that when you post to the website, there'll be some sort of system where you can automatically have it go to your social media channel. They're not going to be actively managing our social media pages for us. I think that's the difference in understanding here. I just want to make that clear, that they're not going, that does not from the proposal that is in front of us look like they're going to be actively managing our social media. So we'll still have to have someone posting content there occasionally and managing, uh, the interaction.
Well, I think that, you know, we would have to develop, uh, a system with them for what we wanted to go to the various outlets. And he did ask if we had a policy or a guideline for that. And I told him we were still developing that. But he indicated that they could integrate everything and make it run more smoothly, which was what I thought was the goal of making a change is to have a website, social media that would work together.
Yeah, I, absolutely. I think that, I, I think that the, the piece is, is that I, and I agree with Kyle when I read it. I didn't think that they would be posting this stuff for us. So we would still need someone like you or Roger to be posting content to, you know, Facebook and like, or to the website, which will spell out to Facebook, Instagram or Next or whatever they have it integrated. But we still would be responsible for content. Is that?
He told me that they could, we could be responsible for as much of the content posting as we wanted, or they would do it if we wanted them to do it completely.
Okay.
I told him we would need to be able to post emergency type situations like a road closure because of a water main break or something that we wouldn't know in advance. And he said they can create an area on the website where we can post things that would happen, you know, on a day-to-day basis that we would need to get out immediately, but routine things that we wanted to post where it wasn't like needed exactly that minute. They would take care of posting those items if we emailed them to their staff, people would take care of it. And they would provide training for what, whomever on staff we had designated to do the posting.
Which is great, that's a great feature.
If you want to have them come to a committee meeting, we can schedule a committee meeting and have them come via Zoom to the committee meeting and discuss it. And then maybe they can answer your questions more specifically.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that you guys are supported enough in the office and that it's not anything that will be, Kyle, what are your thoughts? For John, what are your thoughts? Do you want to invite them to a committee meeting?
My initial thought would be, I would like to talk to the committee meeting just to question and answer, get a feel for who they are. We're going to spend, what, five, $4,200 a year on these guys? I know we can get out any month we want to, but whatever they build for us, they're going to take with us. I'm assuming the content is theirs, the structure is theirs. So if we fire them, we're starting from scratch. I'd sure like to have a conversation with them before we commit to spend this kind of money.
Yes, if you could find out, um, I had sent out the date to the committee members. So if you want to find out when they're available and then send us an email, then let's invite them and, and get a meeting on the book.
Can you send me those dates so I can try to get?
I certainly can, I'll send you an email after the meeting. Thank you.
Anything else from the committee?
No, I think that's enough, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving on, Community and Economic Development, Mr. Miller?
I have nothing further from our previous discussion on the comprehensive plan, so.
Thank you very much, indeed. Uh, moving on, uh, Finance Administration and Ordinance, Mr. Anthony?
Get out.
I knew you were going to say that. I was actually going to suggest it, but thank you. All right, we'll move on. Uh, Personnel Committee, um, this is Agerton, Mr. Wickholm. We have nothing that I know of, Sarah, do you have anything?
Um, just that we met with Roger and discussed some goal planning stuff. So, um, the next time we come back together, we'll, we'll talk, um, about some of those goals that Roger's going to be setting and then we'll circle in everyone. Thank you.
Nothing further.
Okay, any other questions for those two? Um, Property Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Agerton?
Um, I have nothing new. I'm sure Roger will talk about it later on in his manager report about the pool.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have a manager report on this one.
Okay, that's fine.
Is there something you want to add?
Actually, yes. Um, I had a discussion today with, uh, and this is something that I wanted to bring up a little bit to just get us start thinking about this down the road. Um, had a discussion today with, with Mark Leidy, Greg Longwell and Scott Frazier. At the school, we discussed some things that were, um, that we can do to improve our relationship better and keep things moving along. On the way out, I spoke with, um, Scott Frazier about the pool agreement that we have with Upper Allen Township. He would like to start those discussions now. We still have two years on, on the current agreement, um, but he was very positive towards it. Uh, of course, we both said, you know, we have elected officials that have to give the, the final word on it. But if we could start talking about that, continuing that agreement for another however many years, um, I think it would be a, a benefish, benefit to both of us, both of our communities, um, and basically school district, um, uh, students and, and personnel also. So I think there's, uh, there's a lot of, of positive coming out of that. Um, it, it helped us a lot in, uh, getting the pool set up and it kept the, the, uh, the patronage up a little bit at the pool. So, uh, going forward, I think that's the, that's a good idea, so I'd like to continue that. So, um, at this point in time, as far as the rest of that goes for the pool, uh, we're waiting for some decent, consistent decent weather for the contractor to finish spraying epoxy. Sue has, Sue Caniff from the school district has, uh, agreed to take it out with, with my personal stuff going on. She's going to, she's going to try to take the lead on contacting Aqua Specialist and get the pool set up. We're doing everything we can to get that pool ready for, uh, May 31st. Uh, we're going to do everything we can to get it ready. Uh, actually Monday and Tuesday next week, I'm going to, um, Harrisburg to take a test, uh, to get the inspection, inspection certification for the rides and the amenities that are there. So we can do the inspections in-house and still report them to the Department of Ag. So, uh, we'll see if I can still take tests, um, come Tuesday afternoon next week. Um, and then we'll go from there, but, uh.
That's a good move.
So I think doing it in, doing it in-house is going to be very helpful. Um, and I think that's a, that's a good idea for, it's something I wanted to do last year, but they canceled everything with COVID and stuff. Um, and, uh, they, they're, Sue has got people that are certif, getting certified in the pesticides. So the chemical and everything will be handled in-house. Um, so we're doing everything we can to make sure that, one, the pool's open and two, that we're doing it in the most efficient manner possible because it is, it's going to be a tough year. I have no fear in that whatsoever.
I heard that there's going to be a chlorine shortage. Are we prepared?
We are, we are being prepared for that, yes. Uh, some of the.
I heard there's a ketchup shortage too. Hope you're prepared for that for the hot dogs.
The shortage is a very, well, that's, we're going to, this is where we're going to have to take a step back and evaluate what May 31st means, the, when the governor lifting all these things. Um, do I have to invest the money in the, in the plastic at the pool? Do I have to, you know, what do I have to do to that space to make, to meet the, the requirements? So if he's lifting everything May 31st, uh, there's some money I'm going to save there for air conditioning and some, uh, of the windows we were looking at putting in. And we can potentially open the, the snack bar up as a full-service snack bar like we have in the past.
Roger, just a quick question, I don't know if I missed this, do you, how many lifeguards do you have? How many do you need yet?
We can always use more. That's, uh, I mean, it's, even with a full staff, we could always use more.
John, are you volunteering?
You know, I do have my life-saving merit badge, by the way.
I, I think.
I don't think that counts.
No, all right. There are, there's, I think there's 10 or 12 right now. The, Sue would like to have minimum 15, 20 would be perfect. So we are a little short. It may mean that the Olympic pool is, is limited hours, um, and open the main pool for, uh, for use. Uh, we have gone to the point where we've actually offered people that are calling in and complaining about the limited hours, you know, hey, fill out an application, be a lifeguard, you know, and, and help us out. Uh, that's fallen on deaf ears. Uh, but almost, almost to the point where I was offering, you know, look, I'll give you a free pass all season long if you be a lifeguard all season long, you know? Um, so, um, I'm still kicking that one around and how we can pull that off. But, uh, Sue's working on it. Sarah's been, Sarah's been advertising it. Um, Mike Gulak, Gulak has been, uh, sending out stuff. I know Sue is sending five to Big Springs to be tested. So it's, it's getting there.
Yeah, one of the issues we have, and I don't want to belabor this, but there are a lot of parents who don't want their children being in a situation where they would have to come in close contact with someone they didn't know, like in a rescue situation, that type of thing. And so they're forbidding their kids to be lifeguards. Uh, hopefully the governor's lifting of some of the, some of the things will change that mindset. But you, it's, it's the, it's the times we live in, you know? So we're doing the best we can to, to get these guards out there so we can keep the pool open. Anything else for Mrs. Agerton or the committee? Hearing none, we go to Public Works and Safety?
Okay, our committee had, uh, outlined, uh, a goal for doing, uh, something in regards to, uh, bicycle safety videos to attach to the Borough website. And, uh, Joe Booker was pretty much the inspiration behind this. So, uh, there has been some progress made and I'll let Joe briefly explain, uh, what progress has been made in that direction.
Uh, yeah, so, um, thanks Scott. Uh, basically all the scripts I have, that have been written. Um, and, uh, the, the police department has been super supportive with the project. So thank you, uh, Chief and the entire department for, uh, your support. Um, so it's just a matter of getting, uh, getting the videos cut now and, um, and getting them edited. So we're working on that.
Sounds great. Anything else, Mr. Pelman?
No, thank you, Joe. Um, I think, uh, unless Roger has something else, we'll, uh, we'll let it go with that.
No, I have nothing.
Okay. Before we adjourn this meeting, we are going to reconvene this meeting at six o'clock on June the.
First. June the first. So we'll, 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 we'll be recessing this meeting and.
We're recessing this meeting to re-adjourn on June the first. Is that correct, Mr. Cassidy?
That is correct.
And with that, the meeting is.
Recessed.
Not adjourned. All right, it is the, now my task to call the Borough Council meeting of, of the Borough Mechanicsburg for May 4th, 2021 to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. And I would ask that each of you take a moment in that moment of silence to, uh, give your thoughts to Mr. Sersky and his family. So with that, the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Roll call.
President Weber.
Here.
Vice President Miller.
Here.
Councilwoman Aggerton.
Here.
Councilman Anthony.
Here.
Councilman Booker.
Here.
Councilman Pelman.
Here.
Councilman Whitcomb.
I'm here.
Mayor Ritter. Seattle, or what, did he show up?
Mayor is not here.
Okay, gracias. Solicitor Cassidy.
President.
Engineer Rogowski.
Here.
Chief Myers.
Here.
Chief Neff.
Here.
E M Stewart.
Here.
Manager Szarszky.
Here.
Assistant Manager Boyer.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Are there any guests this evening?
Not to my knowledge, sir.
Thank you. Are there any citizens' comments or requests? If so, use your raise hand button, and we will unmute you and acknowledge you at that point. I'm not seeing any or hearing any, so we will move on. Are, is there any correspondence, sir?
I have no correspondence, sir, other than the agenda item tonight.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of council of April 20th, 2021. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that.
I'll make that.
Mr. Booker made the motion. Mr. Whitcomb. Mr. Whitcomb seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Engineers' report, Mr. Rogowski.
Mr. President, the only item that I have to report on this evening is related to the pool. Um, as Roger had mentioned, though, we've been kind of battling the wind and the rain over the course of the last week or so. We were hoping to have everything buttoned up. Last week didn't happen. Talked to Jim, who's a contractor today. He was envisioning, um, he's got two more days worth of work, and right now, uh, Thursday and Saturday are looking pretty good. Um, and there will be a period of time, about five days, that he needs to let everything cure before we can start filling it with water. So, uh, we are certainly tracking well within, um, uh, some of the dead, or identified deadlines. Um, I, I'm not panicking at this point, um, but we are, uh, kind of fighting the weather, so that's where we're at.
Any questions or, uh, comments for the engineer? Hearing none and seeing none, thank you for your report, sir. And we'll move on to the community liaison reports. First of all, Downtown Partnership, this is Aggerton.
So, Downtown Partnership, uh, continues to meet monthly virtually, uh, and they also are taking a very active and wonderful role in the Community Day on August 7th. So, mark your calendars. Um, it is gonna be Community Day and the 100th Anniversary of Soldiers and Sailors. Um, they're tying up, um, with the help of Councilman Anthony, tying up the timeline and making sure that everything is on track for a great fall event for everyone. Um, they also are very excited about, um, being invited to stakeholder meeting for our comprehensive plan, as they'd like to discuss, you know, some of their ideas, um, for our downtown. They also had a successful, um, virtual Earth Day celebration online, in which the community was able to participate and bid on rain barrels and some other things. Um, thanks to, um, Suzanne at Rosemary House was another great event. Um, they have decided to kind of halt some of their fundraising activities, um, for businesses just because of all of the restrictions, but as the restrictions left, they will be back into fundraising and, um, engaging our business partners downtown. So, thank you. That is my report.
Any questions for Mrs. Aggerton? Hearing none, we move on to the library. Mr. Pelman?
Okay, uh, the, uh, Tuesday, May 11th is the Chipotle dine-out. Um, as we know, the, uh, Friends of the Mechanicsburg Library, uh, set these things up to benefit the library, and, uh, for the Chipotle dine-out on Tuesday, May 11th, from 5:00 to 9:00, 33% of your bill will be donated to the, uh, Friends of the Simpson Library. So, that's at the 6455 Carlisle Pike location. And you do need a flyer, or you can download the flyer on your smartphone now. Um, May is also, uh, time for one of the library's book sales. And the, the book sale will be Saturday, May 15th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And this is at the Book Sale and Donation Center at 114 North York Street, Mechanicsburg. And as you, as they usually do, uh, the day of the actual book sale is Saturday, 15th, they have a members preview Friday evening, May 14th, from 6:00 to 8:00, and they have a bag sale, uh, wha, for whatever's left on Sunday, May 16th, from 1:00 to 3:00. And I, I'm gonna, I don't usually tell, uh, tell people about things for the following month, uh, but very early next month, uh, I'm asking everybody to save the date for two events that occur the day after our next meeting, and that's the Ascom Farms fundraiser, which is Wednesday, June 2nd, from 9:00 till 7:00, and the TJ Rockwell's dine-out, which is the same day, from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So, you can get your gardening needs and, uh, top it off with a meal at Rockwell's to benefit the library. But that's just saving the date for, uh, uh, early, uh, June. And one last thing, the library is closed on Mother's Day, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Pelman. Any questions for him? Thank you. Museum Association, as, uh, you've probably seen around town, the blueberry sales are going on. So, if you like blueberries, get your orders in. With the regard to the gardens project, we ran into an electric issue, uh, not caused by any of us. Uh, apparently, the line underground, the main line underground has a, a problem with one, I believe, the neutral line. So, we have what's called a service saver attached on there, and they've, they've dug two trench, two holes and trenched a new pipe through, but they have not run the new cable into the museum yet. So, the service saver is sitting, and the hole is dug right where the Eagle Scout is supposed to be doing his garden work. So, it's holding up our process. Um, I've been assured that it will be done before June 1st. Uh, the, the Eagle Scout is kind of under the gun, as, as are we, to get our county grant. So, we're hoping that PP&amp;L hops to it. I, I managed to make some interesting contacts with PP&amp;L to get this done, and I'm, I'm confident that it will, will be done. The train, uh, display will be reopening again, and, uh, they'll just keep it open all the way through the holiday this year. There will be no other, uh, displays at the, at the, uh, freight station. Other than that, things are moving along smoothly. Um, and last but not least, is Rebecca here?
Yes, she is.
She's muted. There she is.
Yep.
Okay. All right, I'm using a phone, so it's, it's easy to push the wrong thing. You have a copy of my report. Uh, under About Face, two things to mention. The Walker property at the corner of North Walnut and East Main Street, the building that keeps getting hit by the trucks, the overhang. Uh, we, the hardmet last night didn't have a quorum, so we couldn't advance that along, but the Walkers and, working with me, and, um, teed up for it, About Face grant funding, will remove the entire overhang, both sides of the overhang. We're gonna replace the first-floor sightings to best match the upper floors. We'll have to reroute the gutters. Uh, we're gonna pull eyebrow along the, uh, front section of the building on the front and the side, and, um, a little topper on each one of the doors that mimics the roof line where the, uh, really cute attic window is there. So, that'll go a long way. We're now on the agenda for the August meeting, and I really, really appreciate Roger helping us along there and teeing that one, uh, up for us. That was very much appreciated. I know how important that project is to, to so many people. The other About Face project is for Brittle Bark. They have moved across the street to 50 West Main, and this is for signage and some window film because it's a south-facing, um, window. Tomorrow, this is some property updates. Tomorrow, Wolf Brewing Company Own opens. That's at Legacy Park, and that's the first of what's expected to be several, um, retailer eateries in that complex. They're open seven days a week, and our very own chef, David Mills from Smoke and Pickles, is managing the restaurant there. So, very excited about that. Last night, if you're an ABC WHTM viewer, you saw Antoinette Hobbs. She has Annie's Beauty Bar, which is at the corner of Strawberry Alley and Railroad Avenue, that opened, uh, a couple of weeks ago. She does wonderful things for men and women and their faces, their skin. Um, working with an art gallery interest that's looking at the former Larson Meadworks unit and possibly the former Brittle Bark's unit, they can, they, uh, join each other or could, if you want to, uh, both of them. Uh, worst-kept secret is that Linda Bishop has retired and sold Deaner's Downtown Restaurants, and we're still looking for redevelopment project in the, uh, the borough or somewhere on the West Shore, and I have three things to serve up in Mechanicsburg. Bob Buick has paid off his original loan, Mechanicsburg Borough Loan, which he used after he bought the, the business and the real estate, uh, Myers Buick Funeral Home and Crematory. This was for the parking lot. So, uh, he was on time, of course, and up to date, so that didn't give a big boost to the loan balance, but we're sitting pretty comfortably at just under $108,000. That's what I have. Anything for me? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you for your report. All right. Uh, are there any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Aggerton. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second that.
That was Mr. Anthony, I believe, seconded. Thank you. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries, and the, uh, agenda is approved. Mr. Szarszky?
Uh, the action items before Borough Council for May 4th, 2021. First item, discussion and action to set the date for the conditional use hearing for office small-scale use at 308 East Main Street. This was recommended for, to move forward from the Planning Commission. They reviewed it at their last meeting.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Pelman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Aggerton. Is there any discussion?
Yes, we need a date, the time. Uh, let me pull up my calendar. I'll tell you what, there's a schedule that we have to look at for this. The deadline for council to take action is actually the June 1st meeting. We can, uh, this is where I'm gonna have to ask, uh, Solicitor Cassidy's weigh-in. Do we have enough time to advertise and hold the conditional use hearing for the 18th of this month?
It's not, it's not the 18th, sorry.
Um. Council meeting?
That's the primary.
The 17th.
You're right.
It can't be the 17th. That's the authority meeting. It's gonna have to be the 19th, and it wasn't advertised to move, so we have to advertise it.
So, the final day for the conditional use hearing, the 60-day timeframe for council to set the, the date is actually June 6th. So, if we can set the, uh, the conditional use hearing for the first, but I was not expecting to start that meeting at 6 o'clock. We can do the first, or we can do the 18th, the, the 19th. We're gonna have to re-advertise the council meeting for the 19th anyway.
Oh, we're not having the council meeting on the 17th now?
That's the authority meeting night.
Good point.
So, to answer your question, Roger, that, that, that will give us enough time to advertise.
Okay. It's up to council how they want to set that. Uh, we usually set that for a half hour before the council meeting. Uh, we'll have the pathonitary there. They will do so if we are still meeting virtual on the 17th. So, the, not the pathonitary, the, uh, the court recorder will be there. So, uh, we've already contacted them, and they know that we put, could potentially be meeting virtual, and they will do the, the, the conditional use hearing in a virtual set, setting.
All right, so you're going to have this now on the-
19th.
19th.
Yep. That's, that's, if that's council's wishes to have it before the, the regular council-
Before the regular council meeting?
Yep.
Okay, that, being the second meeting of the month, that's the 7:30 meeting, so what time do you wanna do the conditional use hearing?
Planning Commission actually went through this pretty quickly. I think, uh, it's pretty straightforward. There's not a whole lot on here. Uh, Engineer Rogowski had a few comments, and, uh, Mr. Smith has agreed to address those comments before it comes to the hearing for council. Uh, I will, when I reach out to him, to tell him what date we set this to, I'll remind him to, to get those into us.
So, is 7 o'clock sufficient?
So, 7 o'clock is probably more than sufficient.
Everybody good with that? Thanks for the thumbs up, Kyle. Appreciate that. All right, then it is 7 o'clock on the 19th prior to council meeting. Now, you know, we can start a council meeting late. We can't start a council meeting early.
Right.
So, if, if that happens, it happens. Hopefully not. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Um, is there any other discussion? Hearing none. This is Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. The meeting will be held the 19th at 7 o'clock PM, or the hearing, excuse me. All right, next item.
The next one, based on our prior discussion, this will more than likely be tabled. Discussion and possible action to engage Guardian Designs to redesign and maintain the Borough website, social media outlets for a fee of $350 a month, beginning June 2021, attachment number two.
Do I hear a motion?
I think to move the table, the motion, or the-
Okay, there's a motion to table. It does not require a second. Mrs. Martin will do, uh, of your thing, please.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote. What, are you voting on table?
Yes.
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 I'll record the vote as unanimous.
I hear no negatives, so the motion is tabled until the committee can further get the information they need. Does that sound good? All right. Next item, please.
Discussion and action to accept a proposal from Zelenkovsky Axelrod LLC for consulting services concerning the American Rescue Act funds based upon the Solicitor's review. Those were attachments three and four.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Aggerton, seconds. Is there any discussion?
Just a question. Did we go out for, I don't know whether we went out for bid on this, or how, how did, how did they get paid?
We did not go out for bid. This is a professional service. Uh, this is a consultant we're gonna look at. Uh, I've got hundreds of these since the president announced his American Recovery Rescue Act, uh, Plan Act. Uh, this one actually came, also recommended through the Labor Attorney. He's working with them in Humblestown and a few other places. Um, and I actually spoke to, um, to Corey Johnson about some of this stuff, and, uh, their proposal came through pretty well. Uh, Mike Miller was, we were talking about something else, and this came up. Uh, he was very pleased with them, and the red highlights that were on there are suggested changes to the contract that he had, uh, Humblestown, uh, put in. So, uh-
I did send this over to Solicitor Cassidy and I, that's why I made the wrote this item the way I did as far as based on his his review. If there was something else in there he wanted changed, we can, we can look at changing it.
Thank you.
Yep.
The other attachment included in the packet was a list of expenditures. Is that something that we're bound to or is that just?
This is, this is my wish list and I, and please forgive me. I planned on sending a memo out yesterday to this and circumstances got away from me. And this is, this is a wish list of stuff that EMC Wardle, wastewater treatment plant supervisor Huey, myself, police chief had a little bit of input into this. Gary Neff had some input into it. I discussed some things with Kirk Stoner at the county who's gonna be administering their allotment. And this is some of the stuff that we come up with that we thought there's ways that we can tie some of this stuff to emergency preparedness, to some of the things that we've put on hold because of COVID. And it's a way that we can potentially leverage some of this allocated money in place of some of the some of the money that we've been spending to to do repairs and other stuff. Some of these items that are on here have been on hold for a while, particularly the revamp of the Borough website, the A V system in the in the council chambers. There's a way that we can, and and this is something that I've discussed actually with E P D. The comprehensive plan update can be rolled into some of this stuff. We can't pay for all of it out of that. But portions where we're talking about community outreach and a few other things, we could tie that into that. The fire department funding, I have question marks there the same way it's police department funding. One of the big things that we looked at, and this is gonna be a major expense, is gonna be the radios. But I have a discussion with Kirk Stoner. The county is considering the emergency radios also. The highway department funding, based on the fact that we need to keep the roads open, we need to keep them equipped and stuff like that. So this is, this is a wish list down the road. And I included the municipal authority because there's certain things in there that that I think we could I think we could do. I don't know if anybody saw the video out on Facebook that we posted about the the flushable flushable wipes and the problems they're causing for us at our sewer plant. You know, we're looking at different ways that we can do that, but this is something that that has been on the rise since COVID, a major increase in in the flushable wipes causing problems sewer plant.
I think that that hits on a point that I have when I was just reviewing those items that I I've just been hearing a little bit about what some other municipalities were were doing and I was curious if we could incorporate a little more infrastructure improvement into that into those funds and try to tie it if if we have to try to tie that back into public safety and so that that was just sort of my high level thought on that. And given that it's a large amount of money, the infrastructure and the investment that we could get is is significant. So just encourage you to think.
Well, and there's some things that that are not exactly clear yet. Some of the guidelines and stuff are not to this is not have not been ironed out. And that's, that's part of the reason why I would like to have a consultant look into this and and guide us through this to make sure that we're spending the money. One, in the best way that we can for the borough and two, that meets the requirements of the of the act. The biggest problem that I I could see out of this is we spend it the wrong way and then we end up having to pay it back. That's gonna be a a major problem for across the board. Because you're right, this is a, it's a large amount of money. It's not quite the county, the county's looking at forty nine million, but that would be fantastic to have that. But this is a significant amount of money, definitely. And I think we looked at some of the things. Nate put a lot of, put a lot of thought into this and returned it back. I know Chief and I have had discussions on it, both chiefs and I have had a lot of discussions on this and what we can do to help those guys. So and you'll notice the last one on there is because the helping the chamber out a little bit with two years of canceling Jubilee Day. They're, they're gonna be hurting a little bit. So that's, but the, this is not final. This is just a wish list, just to get the conversation started down those roads.
I want to thank Nate for the shout out on the municipal authority website.
All right, we have a a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you. Next item, please.
A discussion and action to approve the special offense permit for a craft show at the First Church of God Community Center parking lot, two oh one East Green Street on June nineteenth, twenty twenty one, from nine A M to two P M, attachment number five.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I heard Mr. Whitcomb. Did I hear you, Mr. Pelman?
Yeah, you did, but either way you want to put it, that's fine with me.
All right, the second is Mr. Pelman. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? This is Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Next item, please.
Discussion and action on expenditures from all funds for the period beginning April first, twenty twenty one through April thirtieth, twenty twenty one, and that's attachment six. And I will read these off for the sake of those on the phone. Fire Fund, eleven thousand, one hundred twenty six dollars and ninety three cents. General Fund, two hundred eighty nine thousand, six hundred twelve dollars and twenty two cents. The Highway Fund, twelve thousand, two hundred five dollars and thirty three cents. The Pool Fund, one thousand, five hundred seventeen dollars and forty eight cents and zero from the capital funds.
Correction, the general fund is two ninety eight, six, twelve, twenty two, not two eighty nine.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agerton. Any discussion? Hearing none? This is Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries and the bills are paid. Thank you. At this point in the meeting, it's time for additional citizens' comments. Now, that's great. Sorry about that. I have an unknown caller on my phone.
Your warranties are expiring.
Yeah, yeah, probably.
Yeah.
Or Social Security wants to give me a good deal. Are there any citizens' comments? Sorry for that interruption, folks. Any other business? We will go around the horn here as I see them on my screen. And yes, I know I can move them, but they're where they are now. So we'll start with Mrs. Agerton.
No, but thank you.
Mr. Cassidy?
No, sir. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Chief Myers?
Yes, sir, I do have one thing. We have two people from the borough in Harrisburg Magazine's Simply the Best for twenty twenty one. One of them is Fire Chief Gary Neff and the other one is Lieutenant Brian Curtis. So you couldn't go on their site and vote.
Congratulations. Get on there and vote, yes. Very nice. And well deserved, I might add.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chief Neff?
Well, I have nothing. That was new news to me, though. Thank you.
Well, that's even better.
Yeah, I guess so. Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Mr. Whitcomb?
I have nothing other than my prayers are with the Borough manager and his family.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
I have nothing except to echo Councilman Whitcomb's comments.
Mr. Booker?
I third that. And also a, I wanna shout out that I'm super excited for the opening, grand opening of Wolf's tomorrow. That'll be, that'll be good.
You bet. Mr. Anthony?
I'll go in reverse order. I will be at Wolf's with you, Councilman Booker, at three o'clock. Are you planning on being there?
I, as as long as my schedule allows it, I will be there.
Let's make sure there's not a quorum.
Yes.
Show our support. I move that we move our meeting there next anyway. So also, I'd like to pass along my family's prayers to you, Roger. I'd like to wish all the mothers out there a great weekend this weekend, every day is Mother's Day in my world, but this weekend in particular. Also, I want to share the Mechanicsburg Bucks program is coming to an end or came to an end on April thirtieth. We'll have a final tally, but we believe we're well over seventy five hundred dollars in money that went through people who were in need to businesses in the borough. So but I'll reach back with a final tally when we have it. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pelman?
Yes, I'd like to just hitch on to that prayer chain for the Szczesinski family from the Pelman family, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Wardle?
You want to add my thoughts as well to Roger and his family and prayers. Also, there was a mention that there was a press release today from the Department of Health that the all mitigation measures except for masking will be lifted at twelve oh one on May thirty first. The general thought is that that includes everything, but I think there's still a few questions on that and I don't have the answers to them, unfortunately. But if there's anything that you do need an answer on, Roger or anyone else, if you send it my way, I can make sure I get it. And also, I appreciate the the motion on the or on the consultant. I think that there's a lot, obviously, there is so many different ways that we can spend this money that is going to benefit the borough. And I think it's best to have somebody come in and really assist us in that to make sure we're spending it in the right way. There really, at this point, are no real guidelines as to how the money can be spent. And the last thing we want is the Borough staff or myself be trying to compile all this and then we find out halfway through that we're spending it on things we shouldn't be. So I I really appreciate that approval. I think that's gonna really benefit.
Good point. Appreciate it. Hey, while we're on that subject, before we move on to the remaining folks, it's come up to my attention and and several others that are here tonight about reopening the Borough offices. I I think it is time that we we do that mainly because all the, all the people working in there are, have a screen in front of them. People coming in would be still mandated to wear masks. We still have the six foot social distancing lines on the floor. And I think for the convenience of our citizens, it would be healthy for us to consider that. I don't know how council feels, but this, I think the sooner the better.
I think it's worth considering, but also at the same time respecting that there are certain, probably certain number of staff members that have worked from home for the past X amount of time that we keep some flexibility in order for for them to still do that.
Yeah, I agree. I I think that it's important that we don't make a knee jerk reaction. I'd love to hear what, after Roger hears from us saying, hey, we think we ought to be thinking about this. I'd love to hear him come back to us in two weeks and talk about a plan.
Something, something that kind of came up actually last night at the hard meeting. I feel like a lot of the time you, people want to make sure that we're inclusive of people that don't feel comfortable going out in public and and whatnot. But that kind of an inclusivity issue came up last night at the hard meeting where people didn't have internet access or something and they were not able to attend the hard meeting, which made there not be able to be a quorum. So we couldn't vote on two projects that were supposed to move forward or are supposed to be voted on for appropriateness. So I think that's something to consider moving forward as well, kind of excluding people with technology deficits.
Joe, were they not able to phone in? Are you not?
They, I'm not exactly sure to the, other than, other than like just not having internet access. But I think it's something to consider, because I feel like by not having the option to meet in person or not, at least not giving the committees the flexibility in a circumstance like that, I know that might be extenuating. I think it's important to give that option, though, so we're not, we're inclusive of everyone.
Well, I would propose that staff come back to us at the next meeting with a a plan for reopening that we can discuss. I I don't call it knee jerk, John. Sorry, I don't agree with you on that. I'm, I'm, I'm saying that we've taken more than our share of precaution and everything else seems to be open up and the women, excuse me, that's who works in the office other than Roger are well protected. So I think, I think it's be healthy for us to start opening it up for the public. But that's just me.
Yeah, what I knee jerk was just simply I didn't think we should make a decision tonight.
I get you. I get you. Okay, let's see, where are we here? Mr. Rogowski?
I have nothing, sir.
Thank you. Mrs. Boyer?
The environmental advisory council had a successful electronics recycling event on April twenty fifth. And I just wanted to thank recycling coordinator Arnold and highway superintendent Lear for coordinating that event and getting our Borough items that needed to be recycled down to the park so the vendor could take them.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pelman? Oh, I did do you, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
You're on here twice, sorry. And we go now to Mr. Szczesinski.
I was okay up until this point. I appreciate all the thoughts and prayers. My son was, actually, he's awake. They they sedated him. That is, his breathing tube is out. He is, he's breathing on his own. He's talking. His wife is going to be a long road to recovery. They're talking some pretty severe burns on her, eighty nine percent of her, her body. The baby is unfarmed. They're my granddaughter. My son got her out first and then went back in the house for his wife. So they were both flown to Lehigh Valley and I'm gonna go out tomorrow and talk to him. So I appreciate everybody's thoughts and prayers, the understanding and patience. I was all right up until this point. Thanks, guys. That's all I have, Gary. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, and I reiterate everyone from council's feelings and thoughts and prayers toward you and your family, Roger. We're, we're behind you a hundred percent and anything we can do to help. I'm sure all of us feel the same as as I do, that we're here for you in any way possible that we can help you with with this situation, so.
I appreciate it. I really do. This, this is really.
Don't want to leave on a sad note, but.
Let me, let me put it this way. This has shown me what this community is actually capable of. I have people that I don't even know coming up to me and telling me they're with me. That their thoughts and prayers are with me, so. And there are people in this community. As somebody that's originally from Lowistown, I never knew how many people in this town knew who I was and how my story, this story has gotten around to everyone. So this town is fantastic. That's that's all there is to it. It's not a town. This is a big family. And I thank every one of you.
Thank you, Roger. Unless I hear any other comments, the music, the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much.